Everyone, I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 21st work session for the Washington County Board of Education. The subject of today's work session is the 2015 legislative session. And before we get into too much detail, I'd just sort of like to review what brought us here, what the goals are to accomplish today, and where this particular work session fits within the overall context of our legislative program. According to Board Policy BJ, the Board will annually meet to discuss our legislative core values, to establish priorities for state and federal legislation, will establish a legislative response team, and we will designate an individual who may or may not be a member of the Board itself to serve as our legislative representative. At our last business meeting on October 7th, we considered our legislative core values. The core values are intended to be general principles that we use to approach proposed legislation and that will guide the legislative response team as it considers legislation that might be proposed in the session. The Board unanimously approved three legislative core values. Those are, number one, local control; number two, concurrent, adequate, and equitable state funding; and number three, that mandates should be limited and fully funded by the state with supplemental funds. So with that forming the framework as the core values established by the Board, the goal of today's work session is to discuss priorities for state and federal legislation, so hopefully drilling a little deeper into some specific issues and what positions the Board would like to take. Number two, to establish a legislative response team; and number three, to designate an individual to serve as officially our legislative representative. The policy says that these will be established at a board meeting, at a business meeting. So my hope is that we can reach consensus on some of the legislative priorities today, that we can come to consensus on who will be on the legislative response team and who will serve as the legislative representative. And if we can come to consensus today, we can move those recommendations to the business meeting this evening so they can be acted upon formally by the Board. So with that as background, I think we can jump into priorities for state and federal legislation. And to lead this discussion, I'm going to turn it over to the recently outgoing Chair of MAB's Legislative Committee, Mrs. Breitner.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. I'm hoping everyone brought, it was in the packet that we received on Friday, the 2014 legislative session core values and legislative focus. I thought that might help facilitate the conversation because when reviewing this and having attended a MAB Legislative Committee meeting yesterday, and Mrs. Williams was there and so was Mrs. Cade, we were able to look at modifications of our legislative priorities from last year, some changes, I think, that are fairly obvious, some that we could delete outright. And then we can, I think, go over them that way first, and then if there's anything we want to add, or if we want to set priorities, once we get these in here. Again, just like this, last year, we have our three core values and then basically priorities listed under those core values. So if everyone has that, if we're looking at the first page, A, which is reading from last year, adequate and equitable state funding to enhance educational opportunities for students. If you'll recall, at our last meeting, we adjusted the core value on that one to read concurrent, adequate, and equitable, so that would be a change, Mr. Trotta. I've made notes, so if that's helpful. So we would add that. The very first one under that core value is sustain the current level of education funding for students. But basically, that was a statement that I don't think is relevant any longer because they have actually, the state's under contract with Auchenblick, is that correct?
I don't know.
Am I close to that, Tony? And so we've already accomplished that one, so I think that could be removed. And further down, if you're looking at the bullets under A, so 1, 2, 3, 4, you can see that we're still supporting a commission because after the study is done by Auchenblick, then there will be a second blue ribbon commission set forward, so that number four is still relevant. The only difference there would be to always insert concurrent whenever we use the terminology adequate and equitable, always just put in concurrent. Any discussion on those changes?
Just for clarity, the commission that's been set up, they're not going to report out for two years?
The commission hasn't been set up yet. What they have is the vendor, they've gone under contract with Auchen, and they're doing the initial feasibility study or setting it up, and then part of their recommendation will be the commission. So it's not even set up yet. The entire process is supposed to take two and a half years.
That's what I was sort of getting at.
That's the point, yeah.
And between now and then, I guess we rely on the legislature to, I mean, they can set funding wherever they want.
We're under the original bridge to excellence, Thornton. Nothing is changing. Now, they are saying that the, they're doing something ahead of the commission which has to do with school sizing. I think I sent that around to my colleagues, and that may actually turn into legislation before the commission reports out. You're looking at probably 2018 before we see any difference in the funding formula.
That's sort of where I was headed.
Is that right?
Yes, I would say so. The current study is really done under the Budget Department and Legislative Services and the State Board of Education. So that is kind of an internal work group that is following that contract, and it's only when that contract is done and the analysis is available that we expect that there'll be a, we hope there will be a commission formed to look at how that would be adjusting the Thornton, current Thornton formula.
So just to help me, because I don't have the history that some of you do, when the original Thornton Commission Report came forward, there was no funding attached to that, it was just a study. And that's the purpose for then inserting the word concurrent in all of this, is that you want to see funding identified at the same time you're seeing the adequacy issue addressed?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because we didn't have funding, and it seems like there is a history of mandates coming forward with great formulas and great expectations, and then the money isn't there, or they have to go out and try to find it, or it's less than the amount. So for instance, Tony, Artif, they didn't do the geographic cost of index, that wasn't funded for quite a while, they didn't do the index, the 1% wasn't funded for quite a while. I think there were certain elements that took a while to become fully implemented.
I think going forward, preschool might fit into that category.
Exactly.
Which is, the funding for preschool should be concurrent with any requirement to have universal or expanded preschool. And I think that's what, in my mind, the term concurrent really gets at, is that type of issue.
Is there any fear that by requiring funding to be identified, they'll have the negotiation around what they will ultimately fund? Because they are not two separate things, there will be a pullback from what ought to be done because just the reality of the moment?
I think that is a possibility, but not a likelihood, since Thornton was passed without a funding source. And there were those who thought that was a very bad thing to do, but it was done. And we really have had a huge growth in state education funding because of that. When this new commission looks at, you know, what adjustments might provide equity in funding, I can't imagine that they would be able to really step back from where current Thornton is. Now, maybe that's an optimist speaking, and it would probably depend on the financial conditions in 2018, 19.
The only reason I raise the question is, I was part of, I was in Louisiana during the, and once in Florida, during two separate adequacy lawsuits that were brought. And one of the reasons that the adequacy lawsuits were able to be brought is because you had the funding discussion separate from the goals. And when the goals were adopted by the legislature, and then they weren't adequately funded, people sued to get it. I'm sure had the legislature been challenged with providing the funding on the front end, they would have chosen a lesser, a less lofty goal because they knew they were going to struggle to meet it. And that was the point I was trying to make, but I understand what you're doing.
And I think the delay, the two and a half year process, is to help everyone try to figure out how to pay for it this time at the same time without...
I think, I'm sorry.
Ideally, some of that money shouldn't be concurrent, it should come ahead because we're going to have to build buildings.
And I think that's one of the strengths. I see in your case where some people might say that was a deficiency of the structure, but I see it as a strength. Because if, if you're not having the discussion about resources at the same time you're having the discussion about priorities, then it's just empty rhetoric. I mean, any politician, and there are seven of them around this table, can run out and say, "I'm going to reduce class size by, you know, whatever." But if you don't have the resources to do it, then it's just empty rhetoric. So I think it's a real strength to force the two to be tied together.
And because Thornton wasn't tied to a funding source, when the economy went south, education took a lot of heat. And justifiably or not, we were considered the cause of some of the issues because education is, has to be funded, it's in the Constitution, state constitution. So I think it's a conversation they need to have at the state level. And of course, the pivot point as we go forward is maintenance of effort and the local share for any type of formula change that they make. So unless there's, going back to A, the first one, sustain the current level, I think, again, with Auchenblick already in place, that first bullet can be deleted. Is everyone okay with that? And then, again, adding concurrent whenever possible, whenever we talk about adequate and equitable, that gives us, if we add concurrent, and there's several times we use that, Tony, so if that's something that we're all, we all agreed as a core value, so I assume we're still on board with that. The only other one under disparity grant, do we want to update that to reflect the two years we've received? And I've forgotten the amount, first year was 1.5, last year was 1.7, somebody can check maybe?
I didn't know.
So it'd be nice to maybe have that information in there. And do we want to add the net taxable income as a bullet there? Because there was a moment last year where they were talking about a shortfall being backfilled by slowing down the net taxable income phasing in. So I think we ought to address that one.
I think net taxable income makes sense, absolutely.
Is everyone okay? Nodding of heads would be good, or, okay.
Do we, is there a need, do you think, to keep the geographic cost of education index discussion in there, or is that being considered as part of the new adequacy and equity?
It will be, I'd like to keep it because I think since the first Thornton was, what, 15 years ago, 17 years ago? But anyway, the wealth index that they've used has changed a lot. And Washington County, under the criteria, I think would qualify for that now, so there is a piece of money attached to that. And I would like to, I would assume they're going to look at that again when they go through reviewing the entire commission.
I haven't understood that we would qualify. I thought we still would, would not. And I think the real point is, the other point about this is that the governor doesn't have to fund GCEI at all. So the larger, which, the larger counties and more urban are the ones that tend to have it. And so in times of stress, the governor didn't fund GCEI, or only funded it partly, and it's only the last few years where it has been funded fully, which has created a greater disparity between Washington County and the other counties. And I'm not certain that we would yet qualify to be in it.
The original, in the original Thornton, they were supposed to review the formula for GCEI every 10 years, and it has never been reviewed. So I would think we would want to press them to review it and look at that and see if there's a more equitable way of formulating that, who qualifies for that. And we're, Frederick qualifies for it, and I'm not sure exactly how distant, how big a gap there would be, and whether we can close that.
Makes sense to me.
I don't know if we'd want to reword that, but that's something that, Tony, maybe you can, to try to get that point across.
I think, as it stands now, we do not qualify for this funding.
Yes.
But clearly, as they go forward.
With the review.
Really, I believe that if they reevaluated the, qualified. But they're unwilling to do that. But I think we should keep this in, add some additional language, asking that if...
And I think under the net taxable income and disparity grant, just saying that we hope the original phase in will be continued for the net taxable income, and that certainly disparity grant would be continued. I'm not sure if they're going to hold us hostage each year on the disparity grant or not.
My understanding is, very informally, that there probably won't be any change in, in how they're dealing with things like disparity grants this year. And probably the teacher retirement supplemental grants, which we didn't get, will probably be continued because under law, they, they are a constant grant to those counties that got it. So I don't know that, that it requires anything different in how it's stated.
The pension cost, do we anticipate anything? MAB isn't talking about it, Tony, Artif. I don't know if anyone's heard, that they're going to try to send shift more to the local. I haven't heard anything. Clayton?
Not heard anything.
Well, I think that there's a timeframe wherein the amount that the local government has to pay for the pensions becomes fixed.
2017.
And we're getting close to that. And being aware of that and the implications, I think are...
Whether they try to shift something before that deadline. Maintenance of effort, we're not hearing anything at this point. I would be surprised if something didn't come forward.
I was going to say, that's one of those to keep on the watch list.
Always.
Because people drop bills that want to carve out things.
Yes.
Those are the kinds of things that you need to respond to really quickly.
Yes.
And I do know that there's some, was it Howard or Hartford, that they were doing some mandating at the county level for consolidation and all sorts of, of interesting ways of taking authority away from boards of ed. So I think there's some interesting conversations going forward after this election. The next one under there, and we're on page two, if everyone's still with us, 1, 2, 3, the fourth bullet down, the increased funding for pre-K. I just think this is going to be the centerpiece of a lot of legislation coming forward. I think it's something we need to have a very strong statement. I think we need to get ahead of it. And as I said earlier, the pivot point is state funding and local maintenance of effort on that. And I'm wondering if we would be interested, I know Dr. Wilcox has been involved in pre-K and some pilots when he was in Louisiana, I believe it was, or may have been Florida.
Louisiana.
Thank you. That maybe we somehow can put legislation, talk to MSDE about letting Washington County maybe lead the state on this and be a pilot for a very thoughtful program. I know that we got some of the grant money, the 3.4 million, 4.3 million? Sorry. That we got a portion of that, as did some other counties, but I'm just wondering if there's some way we can try to get ahead of this conversation instead of having it done to us? And I'm not sure what that looks like. Just thinking I might get some conversation.
Connect this.
Yes, sir. Okay. Any comments? Pre-K, again, it is moving forward, and I just, it may take some time. The main thought is the funding for coming forward and for the capacity for facilities.
I'd even suggest that you might want to move that, that bullet up to be like the second or third, like the second bullet right after equity and funding, because the current way of funding pre-K really isn't equitable, and because the state is not putting their money into it.
Not equitable, and it's not sustainable.
Yeah.
And the compensatory money we get right now for the half pre-K is, what, only 4%? It's just a very small amount of the total cost of educating those children.
I don't actually know the percentage.
I don't know the amount we're getting.
So I like that idea, moving it to the top. I do think it should be a centerpiece priority.
It does seem, though, that if we want to try and, and gain recognition from the state and get a pilot program, we need to have a program in mind, we need to have some plans written down.
Well, Clayton, when we were in Annapolis last year, and we were in the governor's office talking to the staff, Clayton mentioned some ideas about pilots, and staff was very, and Jared Billings was there, Artif, if you remember.
Yes, I remember it well.
It was a great conversation.
So I think we can put together some plans that provide, not only for pre-K experiences, but wraparound services for our young people. They have both health, healthcare components to it, as well as childcare for parents who are busy and working. In Louisiana, we were a pioneer district, and we really had a 10-hour program that really embraced young people and the families of those young people who were oftentimes struggling because ours was a means-tested program, which meant mom or dad were working hourly, and sometimes they couldn't control their shift work. And so we had a component in place where we could keep those kids.
Yeah, I think that, to me, that's the key, is that we have a program that we're willing to approach them with. And I certainly, without seeing what the program is, it's hard for me to support or not support it, but, I mean, I'd be interested if, if Dr. Wilcox and the staff think there's something there that we can, that we can come up with to propose.
I think we could put together a half-page document or a page document that would inform a document like this, and we could talk, you know, one of the good news stories about having Dr. Domaine here right now, she was with me in Baton Rouge at the time, and she'll remember State Superintendent Cecil Picard, who actually embraced East Baton Rouge for kind of our pioneering efforts. And again, we were one of the first districts in the state to do that. We can put our heads together, get together with some of the people from Louisiana even to make sure we have all the components. Even though it's an older program, it was an exemplary program. And then the Board can see and see if it's something you could embrace, or you wanted to take away from or add to.
I mean, it speaks to readiness, it speaks to literacy, it really touches so many of the issues that I know this Board is concerned about and staff is. I just, and why not put it out there instead of waiting for the state to develop? If we have all these resources and knowledge here, I think we ought to take advantage of it.
I'm much more comfortable doing something like that on pre-K. When it comes to the broader question of universal pre-K, of course, there's the funding issue that we're all aware of and have talked about. But I don't know that we of the Board have taken a position on whether, if funding were available and provided, whether we would want pre-K across Washington County. And if so, would we want it to be a half-day program? Would we want it to be a full-day program? I mean, I don't know that we've had that discussion as a group of seven, to the point where I'm comfortable saying to the state, "We support pre-K if it's funded," because I don't know that we've, we've had that discussion.
The legislation that was passed this year sort of establishes that, that pre-K is at least a big goal, and, but it does contemplate that a lot of that pre-K would be done by private groups that already are providing pre-K. It's not trying to do away with the, the churches and the other private groups that have established a pre-K that maybe has gone for 50 years in many cases.
And that's...
So that's, that's all contemplated in the legislation that passed.
And that's sort of where I was going with the discussion. There are a lot of private providers out there, many do a great job. And if, I think if this Board were to say that we think all children should go to public preschool, I mean, we could certainly say that, but there are, there are big implications to that. And if we want to take that on, then we certainly can. I'm just not sure we've had the discussion to see what that model would look like at this point, where I'm comfortable saying, yes, I think if there's funding provided, we should have universal preschool in Washington County. I just...
And I agree, and I'm, I was thinking the pilot would be needs-based rather than universal, that it would still be the Title I qualifier.
We could come up with some sort of pilot that could serve then as a model for the state.
It would be exciting.
We could be a laboratory of democracy for the state, right? To borrow from Jefferson, right? Wasn't it Jefferson who said that? Mr. Ridenhour? Our history teacher.
George Jefferson, I think, honestly.
Well, I was just going to say, I agree with Justin. All children of a certain age should have access to a pre-K program. That's different from saying that all students of that age should have access to a pre-K program. Coming up with something. Do we seem to have consensus around that, where staff is going to come up with a short paper on a possible pilot? We would attach it so that when we go to Annapolis for the day in Annapolis, again, that might be something we have ready to discuss? And I like that, moving it up to the front page.
Yeah.
Again, I think it's going to be very important conversation. The very last bullet on that page, exploration of a new funding mechanism. I think Justin and Clayton and I did a... I think Justin and Clayton and I did a hot topic breakout at MAB, and Justin, you may want to speak to this, but I think this is the opportunity to actually ask for new, not just a larger piece of the existing pie, but new dollars, CIP dollars, that are restricted for use for alternative funding for innovative projects.
Yeah, there seemed to be some energy behind the idea at MAB, and I'll just back off and describe more generally what I was talking about. All of the Dr. Lever's process, which I think is a very good one and provides a very objective way at looking at which school districts have the most need for capacity in new schools. It's a very good process, but it doesn't allow any sort of mechanism for the things that we're trying to do in Washington County, which is if we want to build the hub downtown, in order to get IAC funding for that, we need to be able to show that we've got schools that are overcrowded and we have to create seats, et cetera. The Public Service Academy, some of the other things we've done to create capacity, there's just no mechanism for the IAC to support that. It seems to me that it's in the state's long-term best interest if we're going to use some of these more specialized or boutique spaces to create seat space for students and better opportunities for kids. That's ultimately going to save the state money in the long run, because if it puts off the need for us to build an $80, $100 million high school, that's a liability that we're not going to come to the state with if they'll give us a little bit of money on the front end to help do some of these smaller, less expensive projects. The catch is, we can't necessarily always tie something like the Public Service Academy to this school's overcrowded, we need to re-district to create more space for kids. So my hope is that maybe whether it's through legislation or through something the state board could do, that they could create some kind of mechanism that would allow some sort of state participation for the kinds of projects that we're trying to do. There seemed to be, I think a lot of the members at the MAB conference hadn't thought of it quite that way. I've talked to some of our delegation about it, I think they've not thought about it quite that way. So I think there's a chance to at least start the conversation, even if we can't get a bill passed this year. I think to at least put something in and start that conversation, usually these things can build a year or two on each other before everybody sees that it makes sense, so.
And around the table, we had Talbot County, we had another Eastern Shore, we had Baltimore City.
Frederick County.
I think Frederick County. So we had a variety of small, medium, and large counties, and they were all equally interested in this whole concept and how it might work. But again, I want to be sure we're talking about new dollars, not just wanting a larger piece of the same pie. And the other idea is if we're talking legislation, that school size study, that's a break-off from the Thornton study, that might be an opportunity to present this to that group if they are going to allow any kind of public hearing, and maybe you could find out and we could bring this forward. Is there general support?
Certainly for me, I think it's a good idea.
Like we have a majority.
Yes, as you remember, because of some of the actions that Dr. Hardings and various people took last year to bring the attention to the need for alternate financing and broader use of alternate financing, broader authority in alternate financing, the governor did sign an executive order establishing a group to study that, but I don't believe there's been any kind of report come out that has shown any new creativity in that area. I don't think any report has come out, but I'll recheck on what's become of that.
They've had meetings, haven't they, with staff?
I think they've had at least one meeting, and I don't know.
Staff go to those meetings? Are there going to be more? When are they going to be?
I'll also check and see if we can find out anything more.
Page three, we're under B, core value, local boards of education should establish basically local control. School calendar, interesting, not only, I think we need to do the post-Labor Day as well as now the time of day that school starts and sort of try to wrap those together, is local control. There is, discussed yesterday, there's an advocate for the post-Labor Day saying, well, the way they're going to solve it is they're going to shorten the school year to 175 days.
Which is ridiculous, because other school districts are talking about it.
I'm just letting you know that this is going to be a very interesting conversation in this session. There will be legislation coming forward on this. So I think we need to rework the school calendar to include, maybe even come up with a panel of some of the individuals on our school calendar committee and see if they would be willing to go to testify in Annapolis about the importance of the local aspect of doing a calendar, of our time, start times, that all should be local authority. I think there's an opportunity to tell the narrative and tell the story, and I think there will probably be time for those hearings. So I just throw that out as, I don't know if there's support for that.
Absolutely for me.
Boy, when's the calendar committee? So is there an opportunity to ask and see if people are willing to make the trip downstate?
No, we will gladly be guided by the board, if it's the board's wish is to do that.
Yes.
Yeah, just a question about what you're hearing in the calendar committee, because I keep hearing that people would like it to start after Labor Day. And I don't know exactly where all it's coming from, but I haven't heard anyone say the opposite. So I'm a little concerned which way this is carrying through with the public. Do we have any input at all?
In Washington County at this point? I don't know, has it been discussed in committee at all?
In the committee, they're pretty adamant about starting early. The days in June are not near as valuable as the days in August. So I think when you go out and ask the general public, I think I saw a survey or poll that said 70, 80% of the people like to start after Labor Day. They want to start after Labor Day, but they also want to be finished before June. They can't have it both ways without a lot of things giving in Comar and some things like that. So the general feeling to start after Labor Day, we certainly could do that, but we also have to recognize, I think I worked with Dr. Wilcox, if we had five or six no-days in our current calendar, we'd be going to June, June 28th with five or six no-days. So if you ask the question that way, would you like to start after Labor Day and go to the end of June, people might respond differently than to a question, would you like to start after Labor Day?
That answer?
Yes, but have we looked at the number of professional development days? I know before we had them scheduled for grading for high school teachers, and we also had them scheduled for elementary at a separate time, so everyone had to be off two days for grading regardless of whether they were grading or whether they were just doing a, something else on that day. So have we looked at any of those to see if we need all those?
And I would just say that that's a great conversation, and that's exactly why there should be local authority for all of this. So you, you know, I think it's a great conversation that we can have later. But today, I just want to be sure that we're okay with doing the school calendar, it's still a local control, and that we're going to oppose the post-Labor Day and an early start of the day or late, how are we saying that, that different high school students can't start before 8:30? And I think, Clayton, you'd given us a list, and the vast majority of our high schools, I think Boonsburg starts at 8:45 or eight, it's-
Majority started after 8:30 or at 8:30.
So we seem to-
I came from a school that for a number of years, high school started at 7:30 and it worked fine, and the kids liked it because they had more time to go to work or for practice.
And again, we're all proving the point that it should be a local decision. So this is great.
I agree, I'd rather have the discussion about, the discussion exactly that Mrs. Harschman is starting, I'd rather have it with our calendar committee and our board and our community, not with some, not with the legislature in Annapolis.
So I think we have consensus here on that. Okay. Student discipline is next at this point. Clayton, I think the only thing that hasn't already been mandated or brought forward, the state board hasn't looked at the best practice models. I think they're still waiting to come forward. Do we want to, as a group, still make a statement about disciplines, or do we just concede that it's sort of a done deal at this point? Tony, Artith, any?
I would just suggest that you take your second suggestion and let that one, you're really not asking the legislature to do anything at this point about it. So not including it seems like you've got a lot of other things that you're asking them to look at.
I'm not sure. I know that there was some discussion last year, give it a year, see what happens, and then I think Senator Pinsky said, if there's a problem, we'll look at it again. I'm not sure we've had enough time to know whether it's going to work or not.
We're still looking at, waiting for their code of conduct.
And that's already come out. The code has, it's the best practice model hasn't come out.
We have not seen the best.
Whatever they're calling that, yeah. So if everyone's all right, this one goes away for the year?
I know that employees would not be happy about that being taken out. The conduct that I'm hearing about really needs addressed, so I don't know that we should allow, in this particular case, the state to decide how we discipline our students when they've decided or not decided other things that they possibly could. So I find this one really actionable as far as a classroom teacher goes, having been one. I know that many of the things pulled out and more or less considered not important are very important to teachers.
And I think you share all of our concerns, and I guess what I'm saying from a legislative perspective, when we go downstate, this is considered a done deal. regs have been out there, we have the code of conduct, so at this point, we need to work more on a regulatory and give feedback and track and report. Part of the regs are reporting back to MSDE and the state superintendent, and some of your concerns and comments are ones that we can include in those reports.
And these concerns and comments were not put out earlier when this was done? That's, I don't even know how this got through. That's the most amazing thing I ever heard, but-
That's a conversation, again, this was a regulation, this was a state superintendent and state board decision. And there was a lot of conversation, staff worked at the MAB level, at PZAM level, there was a huge amount of conversation about this. So if you feel str-
Not enough.
I think also there was, there was at least 18 months of meetings, subcommittee meetings for the state board of education that had representatives from not only the PTSO, PTA groups, but the MSCEA groups. PZAM was there, the Principals Association, several other advocacy groups. So there was a lot of discussion, but honestly, I think everybody felt that the state board had a kind of a predetermined mindset relative to where they were going to go based on some of the disparate discipline issues that were out there.
So bulldozers factor.
Well, I think that, yeah, I think when the Justice Department came in kind of at the 11th hour and talked about disparate impact on minority group children in particular and special ed students also, the state board kind of made up their mind irrespective of what the committee was doing. I'm not saying they dismissed it, but I think everybody knew that at that point, they were going to come out with a set of recommendations, and now we're just waiting for the best practices to help inform our practices at the local level, since we'll be held accountable for what they want to have happen.
So I would say it's not going away, Mrs. Harschman. I just think it's now on a different level, and we're going to then be doing reporting on it, and I'm sure we can report back to the board.
But I think, you know, to Mrs. Harschman's point, I think, and I think to yours, Mrs. Brightman, I think now our responsibility has shifted, so now we have to talk about the impact of those discipline regulations and guidelines on our classrooms and make sure that the Department of Education, the state board, and others hear of our experiences, particularly if they are hurting the educational environment for our kids.
Yep. I think we're all on the same page there, absolutely. But as a legislative initiative, I'm recommending we remove it with everyone's nod or-
It's done.
The next one is charter schools. I know we only made one statement there about the granting authority. There's some changes. Tony, I know Garrett County, there was an appeal, charter school came, made application, their application was denied, and they appealed to the state board, and the state board upheld it based on Garrett County's inability to finance it because they were closing three schools. So for the first time, the financial ability to pay was made, usually we weren't allowed to make that argument at the state level. So I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to hear, to add more than the one statement. I know that John Woolams from MAB has said he feels charter is going to be a hot topic this year during the session. I'm not sure where it's coming from. The thought is that there's some movement to take authority away from the local boards. So I'm just wondering if anyone has suggestions how we maybe expand on that one statement? Do we add the fiscal accountability and requirements? Is there some way of be sure that we have more protections? And maybe using the term public charter instead of charter schools? Because in Maryland, you can't have a private charter. They all have to be a nonprofit, even though they may actually be financed by a profit, for-profit, so there's some interesting ways of tracking that back. So I don't know if there's any suggestions.
I think the statement, as you have it, really makes the main point. I mean, you believe that it should not be something that's authorized by universities or by the state board. And until we really see what legislation there might be to revise the whole charter school legislation, putting in too many nuances might just muddy the water a little bit.
And I would say, I think later this evening, we're discussing the charter policy, and there may be some changes in that discussion that might lead to something here as well. I just, so at this point, status quo?
I sort of like it being shortened to the point. I mean, it says, local board should have the authority and should administer funding, and those are the two, I mean, that's sort of the, that's the authority and the accountability that go together. And I think- And I think, I think there's a certain power in having it short and direct. But if you, certainly if you want to add public charter schools, I think that makes sense for that.
Because I think we always refer to them as public charter, just to be sure that...
Well, but does that, that begs the question, does that open the door to you entertain private charter schools? I think, I like it the way it is, the way it reads, because you're opposed to charters that are not authorized here.
So it's a broader...
But I understand why you would put, but I think you opened the door to, well, then we'll just do a private one. Volvo will do their own.
I don't think Comar allows it in Maryland, but, you know.
But that really didn't stop it in Florida.
It didn't.
The Sunshine State Standards did not, no.
It's good to know. All right, status quo seems to be. Anything with the Labor Relations Board? I think that, again, remains the same, Tony, unless you've heard anything. I think they made their changes last year, and it's probably going to be quiet this year.
There's one major case that is...
Ah.
One that relates to wages and working conditions as opposed to the program of education. So that's... Watching out for the case.
But I don't think the language needs to change.
I don't think the language, okay. The last one on that page, the burden of proof, that is going to be another big one. It's coming back. This will be the fourth year, and they're anticipating that something will happen. There's already an amendment being considered, which I think we would possibly want to support to exclude non-public placement from the shift of burden of proof to the school system. And I think that's, if that's all we can get, it's a good thing. It's something. The concern is that our teachers and our IEP teams will be defending against all claims, and it's sort of like you'll sit down and have to think about all the what-ifs and be prepared to defend all the what-ifs. And I'm not sure if it doesn't shift the emphasis away from the IEP and the student to defending everything. So I would just add, and I was going to say it later, but something, two counties, Howard and Montgomery, have already put RFPs out to get an independent audit company to come in and check all of the IEP processes and the entire special ed program. I think they're trying to get ahead of any possible criticism by doing the audits. So I just put that out there. Whether this word, wording, suits, whether we should add an amendment proactively, Tony, Artith, any, just wait until it's written and see?
I think this states your position and doesn't really need elaboration, I think. I think it's clear enough that it gives guidance to the quick response team to take a position if, when legislation is...
When it comes.
Yeah.
If anything, I might take the last sentence out. I mean, that almost, the last sentence to me almost sounds like we're hedging a little bit, that, well, you could, you could maybe do it, but just be careful when you do it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's a good idea.
I think if you take the last sentence out, then it's just very...
Stronger.
Non-negotiable.
Very clear.
Yep. Agreement on that? I don't hear opposition. I'm going to assume agreement. On the last page four, opposing new mandates, I think that's the old perennial that we all support. I'm not sure there's any other way to say it. Prevailing wage...
Lost.
We lost, so I think it goes away. And that comes to the end of the list we had last year, and I would entertain any additional...
Going back to the legislative mandates, do you want to put something in there about concurrent, too, like we did with the...
I think anytime we, let's see, we urge carefully consider financial policy implications, we recommend...
Consider them at the same time or concurrently or...
Supplemental is the word we use. Well, yeah, I guess there's two points. One, that the funding should be concurrent, and the second, that the funding should be supplemental to existing funds.
And not supplanted, yes.
Do we make sure to say both of those things in that sentence?
Artith?
One of the things that we discussed at MAB yesterday, again, is this whole issue of the increasing amount of state money that is being appropriated for non-public schools, the textbook money and some construction money that has now been granted, and that there, MAB, I believe, has taken a policy that state education money should go to state public schools. And I don't know whether that's something you want to even step into at all or participate with MAB when that issue is brought in through the budget or through any legislation.
It's a good question. I'll put it out there. My feeling is that Washington County might have a little bit different thought...
Perspective.
Perspective philosophically on that question, and I don't know how the board feels about it.
Why do you say that?
Well, I think we do have some thoughts in this county about non-public private schools, parochial schools. There's been questions in the past about transportation being shared, about different responsibilities or ways we can collaborate with them, whether it's athletics and whether our teams can play their teams. That question has been here, and it's a sensitive question, and I'm happy if everyone wants to have the conversation right now, but, and maybe we should, because that will come up again. It always does. It's a perennial. My main concern on the funding is once public funding is shifted over, the private schools do not always have the same accountability for how they use that money. And my personal standard is if you're using public money, you should be accountable for how you use that money, so.
I think it goes beyond that separation of church and state. I think it goes beyond just responsibility for how the money's used, but that's just my personal...
I agree. So it's a good question. Any other comments on this? Do we want to wait and see what comes up or go ahead of this one?
I'll just say where I am. I basically think public money should go to fund public schools, but I don't, I don't want to make some overarching statement without seeing a particular piece of legislation on this. I mean, if there are...
So we'll bring that back is...
If there are some...
If issues arise, as issues arise.
Maybe put it on a watch list.
That makes me feel more comfortable. I mean, as a general principle, I don't, I think public money should go towards public schools. But are there specific places where public funds might be appropriate in some way in assisting or whatever in a private school? There might be, and I would hate to box myself in because, I'd hate to box myself in even though I do believe in the general principle.
Everyone comfortable with that, just sort of staying out there on a watch list and if it comes up?
I'm wondering about adding, there was a lot of talk yesterday at the MAB, the matter of having the park assessment tied to graduation requirements, and I know there was some discussion about state board making a decision, I think on the 28th. Not knowing which way that might go, do we want to go on record as saying...
I know we're working on a letter to that issue, so I was...
The letter is done. I'm going to present it to the board today for your consideration of the letter, which will put you on record as asking for a minimum of two-year moratorium and a longer, larger discussion about the appropriateness of the document, using it.
I think we're already working on it. If we'd like to make a statement supporting that in here, I wouldn't be adverse to that.
I don't know if we wanted to back that up with a formal stated position here or not.
Let me suggest this. If the state board's going to act on the 28th...
28th.
I'm thinking as I go through, I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, about 11 or so different changes from last year's document. I'm uncomfortable asking the board to vote on that this afternoon without seeing the changes in black and white. I mean, if they were small changes, then that's okay, but with this many changes to an existing document, I'd rather wait two weeks, ask the board to vote on these specific priorities at the first meeting in November. That will give us time for the state board to do its work next week, and then depending on what they do, we could add it or not add it at the business meeting in two weeks. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Then we can afford to revise the main version of this to vote on at the business meeting.
That's, that'll go out in the packet in two weeks. Everybody has plenty of time to review the actual language that gets put in. I think that's fair to all involved.
Any other new issues that anyone would like to bring forward to add to the priority list?
I just wondered if MAB's discussions, you know, this bowl scare, did they talk anything about...
We did not.
...school systems having to deal.
We did not.
Did not. It was not brought up.
Surprisingly, that was not mentioned.
And then there's another one concerning artificial turf that's out there in the public NBC, taking the lead on that, trying to demonstrate that it's harmful to the health of students.
I would think unless that becomes a legislative issue and someone tries to bring Anyone think the priorities are finished?
Okay, so that, as I said, we will bring those back in two weeks to the business meeting to vote on. We have two other items. One is to establish a legislative response team. Policy says that the president will be a member. I'd certainly also recommend that Mrs. Brightman be a member, but this, of course, will be up for the whole board to approve because the policy requires that we approve the members of the team at a business meeting. And it would allow us to have at most one more member from the other members to be on that team. Is there anybody else who'd like to? Happy to have three if that's the...
And of course, superintendent and Mr. Trotta are on the team. Is it a little bit inappropriate with the election coming up?
Well, yes and no. I mean, we can't help when the legislative session starts, and we have to do our work. I mean, we, we're adopting the core values, we're adopting this, and certainly if after the election, there very well could be a new president, which would put that person, and we might have to shift it around. But between now and when the new board is seated, I think we need to do our work. So if, if when the new board's seated, they could, we can certainly establish a new legislative response team and may have to. But I think it's important that a team be in place between now and when that happens so that we can respond to some of the committee work that's ongoing.
There's a lot of work already starting. Push, push again.
You had it. The red light's on.
Looking down for that. Anyway.
But now you got to talk to it.
Continuing on, we're, you know, we've made the adjustments and said, I see no reason to change the makeup. Let's continue with that makeup, and then if, in the future, after the election, whatever the case might be, there's a determination by the majority of the board to change it, that's when we change it. For now, I think Mrs. Brightman and Dr. Harding's, continue their work. They are, you know, most up to date with it.
Anybody else? Okay, that's the recommendation that I'll bring forth this evening then at the business meeting for the board to consider. The final item is to designate an individual who may or may not be a member of the board to serve as its legislative representative, and I think clearly that'll be Ms. Cade, unless... Tony, you want to try to?
You want a nomination, Tony?
Okay, so just for clarity then on where we are, core values have been already adopted by the board. Specific priorities, we will bring back to the board in two weeks for final approval. This afternoon or this evening, we'll have a recommendation to establish a legislative response team that will include Mrs. Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, Mr. Trotta, Ms. Cade, and myself. And we will also designate Ms. Cade as our legislative representative in Annapolis. Anybody else have anything else they'd like to address during the work session or regarding legislative priorities?
Just one, just one thing, given that Ms. Cade is your, is your, I can't say the word, legislative representative, does the board authorize me then as a superintendent to negotiate with Mrs. Cade about her fees and for service? That comes up annually.
I think you have in the past.
I have in the past, so I just want to be sure that you understand that this comes with some compensation. She's not doing this out of the goodness of her heart.
Doing it for free.
Nor should she.
Can we legally vote on that or say that now, or do we have to wait till the business meeting to...
I think you have to wait, but I just want to make sure that you didn't make it with it kind of uninformed, that that would have, that's the logical consequence of that decision.
Compensation with that vote.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, I want to thank staff, Tony, Artith, and other staff who helped prepare all these documents for the work session today and provided us all the background we needed to have the discussion we had. I want to thank the board for a good discussion. I think we covered a lot of ground here, and I want to thank Mrs. Brightman for leading the discussion. I think we're in good shape to take on the session this fall, or next spring, so...
Good as you can be.
All right. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you all.